Thank you. Let's remain standing for our salute to the flag following prayer. Father, thank you for the privilege of being Americans and gathering like this with real power to vote and to speak. Thank you for our city council, bless each of the aldermen. Thank you, Lord, for Austin that's here tonight to be just representing. And we're praying for our new officers, praying that we can find and secure a chief. We pray for our men that are guarding our streets, our firemen. We pray again for our city workers. Thank you, Lord, for all who represent us day by day to keep this city moving, help us to support them, love them, talk to them when we have a problem. Thank you for Leslie who keeps things moving again and again. We thank you for each other and ask your blessing on tonight's meeting and the appointment of this special committee. We ask you to guide our mayor and our council as they try to resolve and bring satisfaction to this issue. Again, we thank you for the privilege of being here and ask your blessing on our country as we pledge allegiance to the flag, for we ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. And Mr. Bob, while you're there, if you would.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with justice and liberty for all.
Amen. Thank you for that good prayer and for remembering us to the Creator of all things, to give us strength, give us guidance, give us vision for what can be. As every member of the council, I had a chance to review the minutes, the old minutes from the meeting.
Move to approve the minutes as written.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the minutes as presented. Any additions or deletions? We have a second by Dan, I think. Did you second Dan?
Nadine did.
Nadine did, okay. Nadine seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, good. You influenced me and I even said aye myself. Okay, so now we'll enter into new business. I'll ask you to look at the bills that you have been presented and it's time for any questions you might have to Madam City Clerk.
This is made craft. This is $940.
That is for the website maintenance and just some IT service for City Hall. This was, I think, just a month. Usually she's a few months behind in billing, but I think this is just once a month, this month of.
Just $940.
Yeah, not this month, like December, January, or just January.
And they're $250. They're $250 on that card.
$250 is for the library.
So it's $500 for the library.
Yeah.
And three twins.
That is, that is actually not IT service. She picked us up to update our Microsoft Office licenses, and I don't know how many licenses that is. It was quite a few, probably about eight or 10 licenses off the start computers. I have her invoice right here.
Liberty National, $75. Like two employees, is that new employees?
Nope. That's going to be the insurance paid by employees, so it's payroll deducted.
So it's just that.
Yep. So it's really no expense, it's a liability account, so no expense for the city.
And Mr. Artmar, $936. I thought it was $300.
That was on our DNR sample, Sam.
Yes, he wrote a engineering report for us that was required by DNR from us, and I contracted him to do that.
And $179, Sean's.
That's mileage to a class in Columbia. February 2nd, mileage to Columbia for Winter Fire School.
So we don't, we don't know when they're going to that school. We don't have to prove that.
And we can add, we can start throwing that, if that's what you guys want to do. We can let everybody know.
Well, I don't think that's necessary.
Oh, no, I would think that we should make the fireman.
I'm sure he put it in his training budget. I guess, but.
I'm fairly sure it is budgeted out.
And Patty's is about two months worth of billing. Patty's is January and December.
Patty's.
That'd be correct, the IT, yeah.
Oh, okay.
For those in the audience, we're just reviewing the bills that are presented to the city on a weekly or a bi-weekly basis, and as we generate the check for those, it Any other questions?
I don't have anything else.
No other questions? I need a motion then to the chair, would entertain a motion to approve the bills so that they may be paid.
Some move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. So the bills are approved and so can be paid. We move on down in your list, I'll direct your attention to citizens' comments. This is a time when anyone who has something to say from the town or that affects the town, if you're here, present, wish to come forward to council, would like to ask you to come to the front, state your name, please, at the microphone, and please limit your remarks to about three minutes if you can. Are there those that wish to be recognized? Quite crowded now. Seeing none then, we'll move on to the utility board discussion. We have, I think, in your packet, a copy of the, front and back copy of the ordinances that, or not the ordinance, but the requisite list of things that we would like to see these participants in this utility board qualify for. So I have, I have three names to appoint to you tonight, four names, rather, to appoint to you tonight, and one will be forthcoming. Now, one thing that I did not get all together, and I'll tell you why, I did not get resumes on all of these folks because they didn't have time to get them to me, but they will be forthcoming, and we like one, so we can't be fully, fully where we want to be until we get to the fifth one. And I thought we had all five, but then that didn't quite work out with a couple of things. So I can either pass this around, you can look at it. The ones I'd like to appoint this evening are Mr. Bruce Denny. He's the superintendent of high school, and of course, you all know Mr. Denny. I think he's a fair and equitable man, gives a look at this fairly and objectively, and so I'd like to appoint to you Mr. Denny. And I do have his qualifications here. Carol Sarden. Carol lives at two oh three West Sanders in Seymour. She worked at the MFA in 1973, worked HDV lead from '74 to '79, and so on. I agree at all that she's a longstanding citizen in town, worked at school, and I have her qualifications here, so that's the second one. The third one I would appoint to you tonight is she was third. Of course, all these people are well-known in the town, but I do not have her resume at work. She may be like the apostle Paul said in that letter, you know, he's known and read of all the names, but he's certainly no shield. So I think she too would be a fair and equitable person on this board. And then the fourth person I'd like to appoint to you tonight is Mr. Anthony Kelly. Anthony too would have given the good resume, but had to be out of town. Some doctors did it for his son in Chicago, and so that will be forthcoming. And so that leaves us with one other person to appoint to this board. And I have some ideas about this person, but I should have that by next meeting time we can finalize this and make this a complete board. If you'd like to look at their qualifications, any member of the council would like to look at qualifications for them?
Yeah.
Yes. Any questions? I'll try to fill loads of questions.
Larry, have you thought about potentially also maybe, for lack of a better term, advertising for the position, or, you know, sort of, you know, shooting out a flare, so to speak, to see if anybody's interested?
Yes, I thought about that, Mr. Weimer, but, you know, I just looked at the community in the short time I've been here, tried to select those people that I thought would be good to be on that committee and try to reason out who they might be. But since we only have one, we could advertise for that. But see, I feel the two people from outside the city limits, and so now then I need one more person inside the city limits, and it can be male or female. I thought that the board, the complexion of the board might be for the first time around, three men and two women, but it very well could be three ladies and two men.
And all these people said they're willing to serve.
I've talked to everyone, yes. So we do not have to approve those tonight, which you can if you like, and then we could move on into the fifth one at the next meeting. And if it's your wish, I'll be glad to place an ad in.
I don't even know if an ad's necessary, you know, even if we just did some kind of a story, you know, just say, hey, if you're interested in being on this, what the matter now?
Yes, yes, absolutely. And those of you that are in the audience tonight, if you know people that are altruistic in their outlook of service and are willing to serve, well, then have them contact the mayor and we'll move on with this. Any other questions about these that I presented to you tonight?
Do they understand the scope of what this board entails, Larry? You got to talk to each of them to extend the amount.
I have, I have, and given them each one an idea of what we have in mind here for this board, and they're all ready to serve in that capacity. So I think it's a good and a positive thing. They all seem to be eager to work at this job. It's not, as I told them, I see this as probably a four times, three times a year, four times a year meeting, and it'd be presented to the council for consideration after they make their recommendations.
When would you suggest they meet for their first meeting?
Well, I haven't determined the time because we haven't got a full scope of officers yet.
Right.
But I did explain to them that each one, that they would meet for the first time. I would meet with them. It would be a, it'd be a structured meeting so that they would determine from among themselves who would be the chairman, who would be the co-chairman, who would be the secretary. And I think I've got a pretty good handle on how that will work, but you never know until you get there and they vote on it. So, and any member of the council can be at that meeting too. I haven't set a date. They'll, of course, come together here and have their first meeting, and then do the officers of that group, and then we'll go forward from there and decide what days that they'll meet. And then we can either afford them the opportunity of information that we already have that we can place in their disposal, or they can ask us for what information they need to make their decisions.
I notice that when we create this by the terms, do you have, with your proposed appointments, do you have two, three-year terms and four-year terms? Do you have, kind of, picked who you would want to have the two, three, and four-year terms?
You know, I have not, councilman, but, you know, that, there again, we can select that. When we've got all five before you, then we say this one and this one is two years, this one and this one is the three-year term.
Well, that would be, I think that would be your pick, to, you know, who would be.
I can do that. I've assumed that the council might want to do that, but I can certainly recommend to you that as well.
Yeah, I would think your recommendation would bear the term with it. I mean, it's an executive type of decision, so.
I would think, just while we're in talking about this, Mr. Denny is getting probably somewhere close to his retirement at school system. I think that he would be the shorter term and one of those. Maybe Mr. Kelly also would be the shorter term. And there's a lot of qualified people out there that we can introduce to this board. And I think that you'll be very favorable once they've met and come back to the council with a recommendation. I think it's going to be a win-win situation for us.
Mayor, what?
Yes, sir, Mr. Ashley.
And I'm just asking, what can this commission do for the city of Seymour that the Missouri Public Utilities Commission doesn't already do?
What can this board do? That's a good question, Mr. Ashley. I think that we've had so many comments from the citizens of the town about how can we save money on our utilities? And we have had several discussions along with several other things in all the city business that we undertake to do. But this board, their only function is to look at that one part of what the city does and to try to, in an equitable sense, cover the entire spectrum of the city. That's all the businesses in town, all the homeowners, and those who rent. So when this board meets and when we have a report from them, I think we'll have a better feel for the people, and the people will understand, we're trying to cover that base, we're trying to do what they want us to do. Does that answer your question?
Well, I understand that, but I think we can get the same information from the Missouri Public Utilities Commission, which we're affiliated with.
Well, you know, that being said, and that's true, and here's what I would say. Missouri Public Utility is a good concern, they have a lot of information that will be valuable in making decisions on there, but they don't know Ann that lives down the street. They don't know Jim Ashley that lives down on Anderson Street, and they don't know Dan Weimer. You know, we're just numbers to them. But these people, they will be names and people who live in the town, and I think they'll have a greater empathy than some utility that doesn't know, they know who we are as a town, but they don't know these people in town.
And Mr. Mayor, I think the citizens of the town will be more satisfied because they think we are working on this.
Absolutely.
It's something that we are trying to accomplish.
Have you talked to any citizens that relate that?
I, how many citizens have I talked to this week that the ride door was so high? But I had one person come in and he did question about it. I think maybe he said he talked to you, but before he left, I think he was convinced that we didn't need this. But I have had one person, really, that's all.
I mean, honestly, and I mean, I wasn't in favor of this, but, you know, we'll try to get along here. But I haven't talked to anyone in Seymour outside of this room that was in favor of this. And I'm just going to let it go at that. I haven't talked to anyone in town who's in favor of it.
Point well taken. When you're out to do the good, you know, but I know you hear, I know you hear, when you're out there, I'm having a problem paying my utility bill. I know you hear that, because we all hear that.
In the early '60s, people were complaining about their, how their electric bills. I mean, I understand that, I understand that. Electric bills have always been to that.
Right. Well, this is a way, there's some other things I'm going to introduce in this that may work in our favor. Maybe I could throw that out at this time. There is an old insulating machine that I'm putting back together, of course, I know it's very functional. I'm working on the motors or having it done down in Springfield. I thought that if we then sort of opened the doors after we did this thing, did this study, and they give us back this report, we could say to some of our impoverished folks in town that are really struggling with their bills, you know, well, maybe, maybe we can help with that. And so we could solicit from the churches in town contributions that would be afforded the insulation, got the machine, and maybe some volunteer labor from these organizations to help these people get their homes to be more friendly to, lowering their utility bills. So there's ways that we might be able to do it through just the efforts of the churches and perhaps the boards that meet in this town that are concerned about the town, like the Seymour Development Association, and maybe the board that, the foundation board that actually is rebuilding the theater. You know, some of these folks might be able to afford a few dollars to buy insulation, and through the efforts of volunteers, we might be able to remedy some of that and make it better.
But that can't all be done without this commission.
But why are you so against this?
Because people don't want it.
I can imagine you talking to so many people on this.
Nadine, people have stopped me in the truck, parked their car, and came over to talk to me.
And they'll come to talk to me how high their utility is, they cannot believe it.
There's no question about that. There's no question about it.
So you don't think we need to do something to try to lower the utility bills, or even...
I think we need to, we're going to lower utility bills when it's being lowered to us.
Well, we'll see.
I'm actually quite indifferent to this board, although I like the purpose of it, Larry. I like the fact that we're looking for public input. I don't think that's a bad thing. I don't know if this is going to be the fix, probably isn't.
Might not be the total fix.
But I'm starting, I'm wondering about an application that you might consider is, one thing that Grady Bennett had said in previous minutes or meetings that I did find telling was, he noted that, you know, conservation is one of the really big keys.
It is.
In terms of utilities, educating people on conservation, just the small things they can do. You know, and that's one function that I could see this utility commission perhaps being very valuable, is they could, at their meetings, when people come to address them, and I would think that people are going to come squawking, they're not going to come to the meeting and go, thank you for the utility bill this month. You know, they're going to be coming griping because they're ticked off because the bill's high. They can disseminate that information to these folks and say, hey, you know, here's some pamphlets, here's some strategies, because I think that, that there's a lot of, the cooperatives, et cetera, print a lot of that kind of stuff.
They do.
So, you know, that's one function I could see this board being really helpful at, because currently if a person wants to pick up that information, I guess they can do it when they come pay their bill, but it's probably not the best setting for them to do it.
Right, right.
Because they're, you know, we don't have time to sit back here and have the city employees debate with these folks about this kind of stuff.
No, fortunately.
Which this would be a forum where people would know that they could come, you know, so that's, that's maybe a non-intended initially consequence that could be a positive, you know.
Absolutely.
But I think we can all agree that the best way that we can possibly lower utility rates is when we replace it with sales tax, and that's what we need to be focused on.
And that's what we're...
That is what we are focused on.
What we're about to do a little later in the meeting tonight.
Yes, yes.
But I think we'll all agree, Mr. Ashley, that you all hear the people. The people are saying our utility rates are difficult for us to meet.
Yes.
So we all hear that. So if nothing else, we can agree on that, but we maybe don't agree on exactly how to resolve that. But this is a step in the right direction, in my opinion, so.
Essentially allowing the people a forum is what you're attempting.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Realizing that this group cannot lower their bill theoretically.
We can't do that, no.
Right.
But what we can do is maybe help them to figure out how to lower their utility bills.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, my name is George Chafin.
Would you like to come to the microphone, Ms. Chafin? This lady's related to me, by the way.
She survived Alaska.
Yeah, right in the middle of Alaska with the military, so, yeah, it was cold. I own property here in Seymour, I have rental property here in Seymour, and I have my business here in Seymour. So I'm very invested in the community. And one of the first things I said when I got my utility bill for my business was, you know, holy cow, why is it so high? Because I'm very conservative with making sure I lower my temperature, making sure I don't leave lights on, heck, I even turn the water heater off when I'm not there. So to me, if we look to a state agency, I don't really feel like they know me or that they truly care about my point of view. So to have a committee, even though they only meet four times a year, or whatever you work out, I at least feel like that's a local person that will know me, I will know them, and they will hear me. And they're not somebody that's not have any investment in Seymour. They're somebody from here or does business here. And right now, in this country, that's one of the major problems. We got people that don't know us trying to make decisions for us. And so my point of view on this is that I want it, and that's... And that's myself as an individual, as a business owner, and as a rental property owner. If, and if nothing else, I would like more explanations about why it's that way. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
Do we have a time schedulerial on how often this group meets? Have we said, am I missing that?
Have we said how this?
How often does this board meet?
We have not. I don't think, uh, it would be, in my opinion, would be about three times a year.
Well, here, here would be my opinion on it. Um, we've got ad hoc boards in this town that are about as reliable sometimes as a, I guess, a Sherlockan clock versus a German one, meaning they never meet. Uh, Park Board has no time schedule. Uh, I know the P and Z, the last couple of meetings, they're having trouble getting people rounded up. Um, this board, if formed, I think it would be tragic if you said, "All right, we've got a elect, or an electric rate utility commission meeting, and here's ten people that come to the meeting, and then there's not a quorum, and we don't have the meeting."
Good point, good point.
And, and, 'cause I can't think of anything that would tick me off worse than that. So, that being said, um, I would certainly suggest that we, we go ahead and, and for this board, at least for a year, if we do end up forming it, calendar dates and say, "We're meeting here, 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 here."
We have in our, we have set a, a timeframe on this, but not a particular date.
Yeah, I, I mean, and I would, because here's, here's a catch. This is similar to what you see with the board of equalization with the county.
Yes.
Which I've attended those meetings. You know, if you get your property assessment from the county, you don't like it. You know, "Well, I'm obsessed too high." Well, the county essentially runs a notice in my newspaper, the, the Marshall Mail, and says, "Hey, if you don't like your assessment, you know, on this day," and usually it's a full day, and it's in the commission office, which would be like this office, when the commission's not meeting, "Come in," and I mean, that is Grand Central Station. It's quite comical to watch. And, you know, there'll be fifty people in there. And the board will look at it, and oftentimes they do. They lower it. The assessor's there, his staff's there. They, you know, pull out their maps and do their thing.
True.
The point is, I can't imagine if that happened and they weren't there. You know, it'd be really bad. Or if they said, "Oh, sorry, we don't quorum." So,
Good point.
It's gotta be, you know, I think it's really important that there would be calendar dates. And so these folks could plan, you know, their vacations and know, okay, if you're gonna serve on this board, you can't go on vacation and, you know, September ninth and December tenth, and we're gonna calendar these dates. You've gotta be here. Uh, because you wanna violate public trust, have a meeting that the public officials don't come to.
One thing I want to do is to have, uh, Ms. Hillary or whoever's working in the front office to have all these, uh, numbers of these people and to call them all. And before the ad is put in the paper, say, "We're gonna have a quorum on this day. Can you make it?" And then, of course, there's always something that might come up with one of them, but as long as we got three members there, uh, then we're gonna have a quorum and we can have a meeting.
Right.
So, uh,
Well, or, or just determine, you know, it's gonna be the third Thursday of the month, every quarter, and, you know, in X month, you know.
It, it is a little ambiguous. It says, "The utility rate commission shall meet at least quarterly or as needed at city hall," da-da. So we can say that.
I'd like to see those dates, Larry. I'm not trying to nitpick, but I think it would be good to have those dates set, and these folks know that when they're appointed, they're expected to be at this meeting. You know, 'cause, 'cause, you know, currently, uh, like I said, this, this is probably another discussion, but we've got a few boards in town that ideally could be real assets to us. Uh, they really could. The, the Park Board could be a wonderful asset to us. Certainly the P and Z, which I think with the new appointments, it's going to be. Uh, but at the same time, uh, you know, we might want to, 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 to look at attendance clauses or something along those lines. This is, this is a really serious board. I really see this as a serious board.
So, yes.
And, uh, but I also see the Department of planning and zoning commission are serious boards. And, um, you know, unfortunately, when's the last time a Park Board met? Can you even answer that?
I, I have no idea, Dan.
Yeah, that's a problem.
I don't, I, you know, I know when the P and Z.
I don't want this board to morph into that, because then what we have is we've just got another city program where people go, "Well, they've been at this thing and it's crappy. It didn't work." You know, I, I don't wanna see that.
I think that, uh, as far as P and Z and possibly the Park Board too, uh, you know, it's the people calling from up front. Say, "Look, tonight's the meeting night. Are you gonna be able to be there?" And I know myself, I get busy with the things, you know, that are going on in my life. And, uh, but if someone called me and say, you know, "You're supposed to be at a meeting tonight," I'll probably be there, show up.
Right.
Because someone reminded me. So I, you know, behind every successful man, there's a good secretary. So, uh, we, we need to be called and be reminded of that. So we can certainly plug in those dates. We haven't, uh,
Well, looking ahead to the twenty-second would be our next meeting, right?
On the calendar.
Fourth, that is the seventeenth calendar.
What about at the twenty-second, Larry? Could you have dates for us for the coming year?
I can have that. Mr. Weimer, I, I can have that. On the twenty-second, I can give you the dates that we'll meet. And what else was it you asked for?
Fifth candidate.
Fifth candidate. And then for these two that don't have resumes, that'll give them.
And I'll have those for you as well. And then we can finalize this thing and then set the first meeting date and move forward from there. Thank you for your input. Very good, very good, very good discussion. We are down to the next thing on your agenda, ordinance, Toth and Associates Professional Services. I would direct your attention to the ordinance that you have before you. This is the drafted contract along with the ordinance attached to it. And we have, uh, at least Paul and I have gone over this thing and made some revisions in the old offering. And, uh, along with Toth and Associates have reviewed, and also we've come to this instrument that you have before you. So, uh, pull that up and let's take a look at it. And then, uh, Chair would entertain any, uh, suggestions, motions, or questions at this time.
We're looking at bill twenty eighteen seven forty-five, right?
Yes.
Yes, that's right.
Is it okay if we ask Matt questions from here, better off of you, Larry?
You may, you may ask Matt questions or Mr. Link questions. I have a couple of questions myself, so, uh, Mr. Weimer.
Yeah, uh, Matt, we approve this tonight. When can we start? Good.
Survey is already started. Based off of your verbal affirmation.
Good. Have there been any contract changes since the last time we talked about this?
Yes.
What, what, what was changed in the contract?
Larry, you want me to hit some high points?
Uh, yes, Mr. Link, if you would weigh in on that, please.
Um, I had, I met with Mayor yesterday or the day before, and we kinda went through the contract line by line. And then, uh, I ended up talking to Mr. Miller, and we got some stuff. And most of the changes, I mean, I, I can go through them. There was probably twenty-some changes, but they were all, what I would say would be to the benefit to the city. Uh, and that like, for instance, the one we were, two weeks ago, on page two to thirteen, you'll even, they even showed the strike three were, uh, about changing the hourly rate. We felt like the city should, it should be a locked-in hourly rate for all these folks. So that Toth was agreeable to striking that language where they could do a variable rate. Um, some other, uh, oh, higher points. I'm trying to hit those. We, on the section dealing with paragraph two or task two, uh, there were some questions about the various permits. We wanted to make sure that, uh, Toth, in essence, uh, assisted in creating, working with getting the permits done correctly. We, we, just cleaning up the language, wanted to make sure that Toth was taking the, kind of the laboring order to make sure the permits were submitted correctly, rather than just basically leaving them at city hall and trusting that we send them in the right way. So just change the language. So Toth does the permits or works with the contractor to do the right permits, and they send it in and pay the permit fees so that we make sure that we don't get some call from the state saying, "Well, hey, where's your permit for such and such?" Then, uh, and there's quite a few of those changes. When I say there was twenty-some changes, a lot of them were dealing with that issue of just the, have, making sure Toth was the supervisor creating the, the permitting issues or any documentation that had to go to various state agencies for this thing, that they were the ones that did it. You move on to like task six for bidding. Uh, there was, like in six point two, for instance, the, the contract did say that, uh, the bidding documents will be provided by the client, which in that case was City of Seymour. We, we don't wanna be the ones creating the bid specs, 'cause we're not engineers to know what all needs to be in the bid spec. So Toth is gonna do that. And so, I mean, I can go through some of the others, but that's, to hit the high notes that was added. Another one, they, they up their insurance to, uh, two million instead of one million. They're gonna have, uh, professional liability or also, you know, commonly E and O insurance. And, uh, just some more protections for the city is what we wanted to add in.
And no, no real fundamental.
Yeah, and Toth, no, nothing. No, they were more of just protection for the city. And, and I would, Mr. Miller was fantastic to work with, and they, they, Toth was agreeable to doing the changes we wanted. So it was a, it was a good meeting, so.
Matt, I noticed that the, in your initial drawing you gave us, and I'm not playing engineer, I'm just quizzing, because I've heard a lot of the, like, maybe you'd call them coffee shop engineers asking me in town about what is going on. Does this project need a ten-inch line? I've had two or three people, again, who have no degree in anything except know-it-all. Tell me that they think that we maybe need a ten-inch line versus a six. What do, what, what do you say to that?
That's one of the things that will determine our design.
Okay.
It may need a ten-inch line based off of your proximity to the water tower and, um, anticipated usage. A six-inch line, uh, is most likely going to be sufficient. But I haven't done the calculations yet on your system to see exactly what's necessary, so that's something we'll determine.
How much more cost would there be in this project if we upgraded from a six to a ten?
Uh, that cost is minimal, because the majority of the costs are still the higher than the lower cost. The material cost is minimal compared to the total cost of the water, so you wouldn't see a huge increase.
So then even if the numbers say that a six inch will probably be sufficient, we could go ahead and have a ten inch? If that paid the difference?
Yes. Um, there are, there are, there are issues that can arise by putting in lines that are larger than needed, um, just dealing with stale water. The man's not there to pull enough water through a ten-inch line. You end up with, you could end up with stale water. So, uh, it's a balancing act, but there is, and again, something will determine your design. But it certainly could be that the six-inch line is sufficient, a ten-inch line is still okay if you wanna upsize it. In case you have to, it's a cost, and that would be, that'd be a decision that we would go to you.
Well, that's what we pay you, Matt. You're our, you're our, you're our resident engineer.
We would tell you, if, if there are options that fit within the design criteria, we would present those out.
Looking forward, let's say that hot corner out there becomes, you know, developed central. We, out of nowhere, have a ginger tanger outlet out on the Seymour Highway there of US sixty. Would we have to upgrade to a ten at that point? Probably.
Possibly.
The drawback, though, is stale water.
Yeah, if you don't have the demand for the water out there immediately, then the water line is likely already ahead of circulation problems.
Just thought I'd ask.
Yeah.
He and I had that, uh,
You already have a six-inch line for the power.
I knew that.
So, um, you would, if you do the outlet hall out there that's gonna, or a water park that has a huge demand of water, then you'd have to look at revising the water all the way back to power.
Yeah.
Okay.
We had talked about that today, Matt and I on the phone.
You read my mind.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Oh, I go to the same coffee shop, I think.
Yeah, you got it. Yeah, yeah. A lot of civil engineers in Seymour.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I have, uh, one here. And I have six point three point two, uh, Paul, but, uh, I read in this indemnification clause, and maybe I wrote down the wrong point.
This six point three point two is the one on the hazardous materials, and that's what Matt sent around, uh, I guess it was yesterday, that, or maybe earlier today, that they, his, their insurance won't allow them to not do that. I mean, that's basically if, if they're out there and they run across something that's in the ground, that's, you know, a big oil tanker or something, that they, they're not responsible for, you know, something that happens because there was some unforeseen hazardous, something that's buried out there. But that's, they don't wanna assume the liability for that.
You know, and, and Matt, here's the thing, you know, I, I don't like the word indemnity when it refers to something I'm doing for you. Uh, we, we have agreed to indemnify your firm for the amount of, uh, the bid, for maximum of two million dollars, I believe, in the bid. Is that not right, Mr. Link?
They have two million of insurance, and what, what they've done is, that language was changed where they now are, whatever's the greater number, for the amount of the bid or two million dollars, they will, um, take responsibility for that.
Right, up, up, up to that amount. And I'm just wondering if it would be an unfair thing to ask that our limit also would be two million on this indemnity clause. How do you think that would fly? That would be the same thing you, you asked, we asked, expect to view to go no further than two million dollars in an indemnity for problems that we might see. But then at the same time, for problems that the city might, uh, might occur on behalf of the city, would it be reasonable to expect that maybe that we could ask the stopgap to be the same amount? Or would it not be, Mr. Link?
I mean, we can ask. I, I don't know, what I don't know, and what Matt's probably not gonna know, is what the, whether or not the underwriters of their insurance would agree to do that. I mean, I, I mean, I don't know that they'll, this would ever come up. I mean, or that, that they, there would be something on the city that would, if we ran, they ran into a hazardous material, I don't, that would be over two million bucks, but.
Yes, well, and that's why we're talking about council members is, um, let's just say that we're digging in the dirt down there. We uncover an old, um, fuel barrel of some kind, and through an ecology study, we find out this is a contaminated site. It's gotta be cleaned up. So, uh, what we're saying then that, uh, that we don't do anything or we don't, uh, we indemnify or hold harmless.
Basically saying it's on us to fix it if there's a, if there's some unknown hazard under the ground.
We, we fix it, that we fix it primarily. I mean, we might have to adjust the.
Well, how would this be anybody's problem other than the landowner's problem? I mean, we're just letting the public tell us that.
Right, right.
We don't have any liability.
We, we will in essence, because it's gonna be on city property once we get this thing in order, council.
It's on city property.
It will be, when, when we have an.
You mean, you know what the lines are in?
An easement for that line to run.
Right.
But,
But I guess what you would do.
The line wouldn't be in.
What are you doing, Dan? I guess what I'm tracking with you.
My point is, the line wouldn't be in. If there was a problem there, we'd stop the line and go, "We're out."
We might, we might just. And we might, we might just reverse the line.
Move, move the line to a different location.
Yeah, it's a different area. So, that, that way we can avoid litigation that way.
Well, I'm just, and I always look at these things because that's the way my mind works, I guess. But, and the other problem that I had in it, or maybe not a problem, but it's just a question, six point three point two.
That's what we were.
Oh, wait, six point four point one, rather. In review of the contractor's work, the engineer will not supervise, direct, or control. And of course, if you were a general contractor, TOTH was a general contractor, then you would oversee and supervise. You will supervise the scope of the work as far as how you have it engineered. Am I correct?
That's terminology difference. We will observe. We can't supervise the contractor, and we can't tell the contractor how to go about installing it. We can't dictate his needs and methods because our insurance won't cover us for doing that kind of thing.
I got you.
What our insurance will cover us for is we go out to the site, we observe what they're doing, and we can tell them whether or not they're in compliance with the contract documents. So, if we told him to put in a six-inch line, he's putting in a four-inch line, then we say, "Hey, stop, you're doing it wrong." That's a four-inch line, it's supposed to be a six-inch line. Well, we can't, so the term, I think we're getting hung up on the term supervise, and that's just one of the words that our insurance company won't let us say that we do. But we do stand out there, watch them, and make sure they're doing any compliance with the contract documents.
Okay, my, my question then, to that is, in the second sentence on the, in that paragraph, was the engineer will not be responsible for the contractors, so forth and so on.
And that'll be, because that'll, that'll be dealt with the contract between the contractor and the city. Once that, once the bid is, those jobs bid, we'll have a separate contract with the contractor where if they breach that contract, the city would have a claim against the contractor. Like, Matt's just saying on behalf of TOTH, if the contractor does something wrong, it's between the city and the contractor. It's not, we, we're not in trouble because we didn't, they put a line in different than what we told them they should.
Ultimately, then, the city is responsible.
Well, no, it would be, there'd be a separate contract between the contractor and the.
And we will.
The contractor would be responsible.
We will have contract between the contractor.
Contractor and the city.
In the city, but who actually is responsible for making sure the contractor has done what he agreed to do?
Well, they're out there looking at them, and the contractor would be under contract to do it per the contract. I guess, I'm trying to think what your question is. I mean.
So, he'll have a performance.
He'll have a performance. The contractor would have a performance bond to do the job right. I mean, I, I guess, I mean, can we guarantee, beyond a shadow of a doubt, they won't screw some up? I guess, no. But, I mean, they'll have a contract with us and I'll have a performance bond to do it right, and the engineer out there telling them what they need to do per the engineer drawing.
So, the, the point of, of this is that if, if the contractor does put in a four-inch line when I've got my back turned, and then in a year when you go to turn on the water at your new water park, it doesn't flow fast enough, and then you dig up the line to find out what's wrong, you find out it's a four-inch line, this means that you sue the contractor.
And, right, because the contractor would have a contract with the city to put in the six-inch line.
Sure, they're going to be required to show us proof of insurance, all that stuff.
Right.
So, we won't be, we won't be responsible, the city won't be responsible for reviewing and inspecting?
No, you don't hire us to observe.
Okay. So, Mr. Link, that, this terminology.
It's, it's fine.
Okay. That's, that was my question. Make sure that if we are going to have to be responsible to make sure that that's put in the way you engineer it, then we need to know, and ultimately, the city has to make sure of these things. Is that right?
That's right.
So.
Well, I mean, ultimately, the DNR will require us to sign a document that says this was completed in accordance with our contract documents, and we return that to DNR. So, we, that's why we want, that's why you're hiring us to observe it because.
Absolutely, right.
To get the permit completed, we have to sign it if it's.
Correctly.
And have substantial performance with the contract out.
And I might just say to our city administrator, he was a little bit miffed at me for going down to fill these questions, Mr. Link, and I feel like it's part of my responsibility as mayor, council members, and citizens of the town to make sure that we're getting the best deal for you and that the contract is, is written in an equitable fashion so that it's a good deal for both parties.
I think that's why we have an attorney and a professional group of people putting the line in, is that is their job, and I would have expected them to do that. However, I didn't have any input on this because I was left out of it, and it is my project.
It will be your project, Mr. City Administrator.
It was.
When it's turned over to you, sir.
You know, it was turned over to me to start with.
At our last meeting, it was turned over to the city administrator.
The city administrator.
Well, the mayor has, has a responsibility to make sure that.
Well, you might have, but.
That it's the best deal for the town.
What you should have done.
And if the city administrator doesn't do that, well, then it's the responsibility of the mayor to make sure.
I didn't have a chance to do it because you did it.
Did you not have the contract, sir?
You're not going to make me mad, Larry. You went over what you should have done. You did what you wanted, wanted to do. After this board, give that project to me. That's all I'm saying.
Well, this is probably Sam, but I'm just making sure that you understand.
Well, I'm making sure you understand. I mean, you've involved, you've done this here in front of the whole city, and, and the problem is that you didn't say anything to me. You went out of your way to do all of this without even mentioning it to me, and it's my project.
It is your project, when it's turned over to you, and that's, I agree with that.
Well, I, I hear what you're saying, but you're not hearing what they said. The project was given to me, period, at the last meeting.
Well, I believe I'm exercising my rights under.
Your rights.
Book of ordinances that we, we operate on.
Well, we're back to that, I see.
Well, I think we're on that, Sam. We're always on that. What, what does the city ordinance say? So, there's the thing. Ultimately, Sam, it's your responsibility to run it after it's signed. I don't know who is, who's on here to sign this thing.
I believe we set it up, Mr. Mayor, for you to sign it.
The mayor signs. Let me say, Sam, that anytime the mayor is responsible for signing an instrument, he's going to make sure that it's in the best interest of the city.
I heard you a while ago. I know you're going to do what you want to do. You made that perfectly clear to me.
Very good.
Very good.
Do we need a vote on this, Larry?
Well, we will because this ordinance will have to be read twice.
It'll be, be read twice and voted on.
And then voted on, yes.
Ready for that?
We're ready for that, Madam Clark.
It's bill number two thousand seven, two thousand eighteen, seven forty-five, ordinance number seven forty-five, an ordinance accepting the contract agreement for professional services between the City of Seymour and TOTH and Associates Incorporated and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract.
Go, pass it.
The chair would entertain a motion to accept it.
It's due.
Do I hear a second? We have a motion and second by Mr. Weimer. And any further discussion? All those, I need a roll call vote, please.
Are you ready?
Yes.
Jim Ashley.
Yes.
Lady Chris.
Yes.
Dan Weimer.
Yes.
Mary Pfeiffer's absent.
Okay, second reading, please.
Bill number two thousand eighteen, seven forty-five, ordinance number seven forty-five, an ordinance accepting the contract agreement for professional services between the City of Seymour and TOTH and Associates Incorporated and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract.
Motion to accept it.
We have a motion on the floor to accept it. Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Do we have a motion and a second? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Jim Ashley.
Yes.
Lady Chris. Dan Weimer.
Yes.
Motion carries, and we are able to sign the contract and move forward. In any progress, sometimes there's a little struggle. And the way people see things is a little bit different from times to times. So, I would move on then, if, if there's no other questions or comments.
Moving forward, this is Sam's baby.
This is Sam's baby from this point on.
Right.
Let me just make that perfectly clear that I was looking out for your interest in the people of this town when I went down, and there were several instances. I, I mean, I, I could read some of these. The client will be responsible to pay their fees associated with the courting easements and reimburse expense to the engineer. And I just thought that since we're hiring the engineer, because it's much simpler, for one thing, there's not, it's not a great deal of money, but it's just ideal that the city would pay for that in addition to other things that paid the engineer. The client, the client will be responsible to pay for all searches performed by the engineer such as, and reimburse that expense. So, these are the things that we went over and, and asked TOTH and Associates to take out, and they were very good about answering our request. One other thing that if there is a, the bid openings, I suppose, I didn't read that in there, but our bid openings.
What, what they're going to do, and Matt can back this up, the bids go to them, and then they do basically a synopsis where they, as the engineers, what they think of the bids, and then they will be presented to the board at a Board of Alderman meeting of, here's who all bid, and here's what we think, and then the board approves whoever the contractor is. So, I mean, it's, in essence, a bid opening in that they will come and, TOTH and Associates will come and present, here's who all bid on this, and here's what we think of their qualifications, and then the city, the council votes on which contractor they want to go with.
We have the obligation to take the best bid for, we, we don't have to take the cheapest bid every time.
Right.
But we have to take the best bid. So, so this is, this is where I was coming from. I'm going to have to sign this instrument, so I felt like we needed to go through there. I went to Mr. Link, talked to him about it. Mr. Burke had not contacted him, so I felt like I needed to, and so I went there to do that. But now that I've done that, you've agreed to the contract, it will be laid at his feet. If that does not go through in accordance with the terms of the contract, it is responsibility to make sure that that happens. So, not the mayor, the administrators. So, any further questions about that?
I don't agree with any of what you said. What you did was incorrect. You made it sound like that I didn't have enough sense to do that, so you did it, and that's not the case at all. You just took it upon yourself and done it without, and the thing was, Larry, you never said anything, Mr. Mayor. You never said anything to me. I guess you didn't feel like you needed to.
Well, we can talk about that at another point in time, but here, here's my statement. I, I did what I did for the benefit of the people and for the benefit of the council and to work out the, some of the profit that I perceive to be.
I've heard you say that several times, and I got it. I just don't agree with it.
And, and the chair hears you.
Okay, good.
Mr. City Administrator, and the point is well taken. Any comments from this point? I'm going to ask you to move on then to supervisor's report. Mr. Mitch Plummer. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Mayor.
We've been working on that three-page line for Quality Shop and worked on the transportation just station and that's done at Service Plant and, and, well called, on Cardwell, built some houses out on.
Yeah, built a couple.
Fifty in service up, we're considering work to build out. And had trouble over one thirty-eight forty, even reverse burnout. We had to keep doing this and talk to some contractors of that kind and putting a bid on replacing some quality. So, feedback with the.
Very good. Appreciate you, Mitch. This time of year, this is not the best job to have, but it's, we're glad you're out there doing it. Any questions for Mr. Plummer?
Did you say that they was putting up some poles?
Yeah, we, we got, we're like, we're going to follow the, we can put up some, uh, progress. And I talked to them. This week or last week, I talked to them.
Oh, okay.
On that three-page?
Yeah.
And then, Belma Street is that street where Cardwell's building the houses, right?
No, this is that one, the Quality Shop.
Oh, okay.
Across that, we, but, and, and I've been helping us later. That one, time we get it done, we're going to come back down that one fence road. And they've been cleaning out that fence road for, it, there's a line already there. We've got to reach it out there, set some more poles and that, after we get the Quality Shop going, but they've been cleaning out that fence road for, on three, we're still throwing up.
Good. Good. I don't know if any of you have been out there and looked at that line, but it's very professional, looking just as straight as it can be. Good job, Mitch. Anything else?
Mitch, looking ahead, we're talking about instantly. You touched on, essentially, you're getting bids for the people that replace our poles and need replacing. That's, that's what you said, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I didn't hear you real clearly. When do we think that they'll get started on that project, call upon? Yeah, yeah, I mean.
The other one guy, the other two contractors, never did call me yet. They're supposed to, because there's one, Shelby, he come, Paul, believe me.
Paul, yeah.
He come down and he said it's, you know, he thinks something next week, but we didn't look at it.
That's great. Good deal.
It's going to be very expensive.
I figure.
Yeah, it is, it is.
Yeah, yeah. But it would be expensive if we did it.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And they probably, Christ is quick.
Absolutely.
Well, because you all have to do a lot of other things.
Well, yeah, they're, they're talking about like six guys on a boat.
We don't have that many, that's right.
Right, that makes a lot of difference.
Very good. Anything else? I'll attend. Direct your attention then to the next report, and that would be the assistant supervisor's report, Mr. Chuck Smith.
Chuck, can I say something before you start?
Yes, ma'am.
You all have done a very good job cleaning the streets and salt them, a very good job.
Appreciate, thank you. You all should have a copy of our report, as always. We're still working on play area out South Park. Weather hasn't cooperated with the whole lot.
Right.
It's been a lot of time, like I said, on the streets, these little, little bitty ice points we've been having, it just, it eats up a lot of time. You know, every time you put salt in the truck, take it out, you got the, and you're done. You got an empty yellow salt out, you got to wash the truck, you got to neutralize it. It's about a day-long process, just cleaning up each truck. So, that just, it eats a lot of time up. M twenty, we have gotten frame and carry spits done. That's the fence road back there. That's, that's finished. We've been working on the gravel roads a lot. They've taken a beating with the weather, weather too, getting a lot of potholes. So, been running road grader, been filling some holes.
On Pioneer, I think it's Pioneer Drive, they said, they really wish that you could fill some of those holes. I know you all grade it down there, but they said this is in potholes.
Where's Pioneer Drive?
Down there by.
Rick Ue, Rick Ue.
Got you.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I hear that you called me, road grader out there.
Yeah, they said you done that, and that helped, but this, this is really big holes.
I took, I was down there yesterday in the truck, and it wasn't, it was the best shape it's been in a long time.
Pioneer's in good shape.
Yeah.
Last summer, we, we widened that road a little bit. It had a lot of trouble washing out.
Yeah, right.
The problem we had with utilities were right on the edge of the roads. We actually took the grader out there and went on the other side of utilities and widened that road by, by a foot and a half, two feet. And cut a ditch down through there and put some rattle in, and since then, that road's held up really nice.
Are we talking Pioneer, is that down there where, that Mark does those, he does those old cars?
Yeah, that's down past his house, yeah.
And he said, I don't know, he told me, just, said you done a good job grading it, listen to folks.
You were working on it yesterday, weren't you?
You were working on it yesterday, weren't you?
It's warm.
The day before, yeah?
Okay. Yeah, it's in good shape, I don't, if there's somebody's complaining about, I don't know what it is, I can stop in there and talk to them.
Well, if you're down for that, yeah.
Yeah, we have been getting around the gravel roads. Also, at the last meeting, the mayor asked me to include in my reports, construction projects along downtown, I have included some pictures, turn the next page, the next one's Ryan Henry Spence's, before and after on that. Here's me going over the old lead plant, which I did, I'll include a picture, they're pretty much just ripping down all the old conduit, the old wire, where they had machines from the factory in there.
Now, that's, it looks like a real large place, what plans have you been had for that, do you know, or?
You know, I really don't know what they, what they intend to do with it.
I know, you know, I think they're making apartments for missionaries, you know, they train missionaries, but then it's like they're doing it.
They don't, but they have like models and literature and stuff like that, they're gonna send it out.
Distribution for them.
Languages and all that. They don't have any apartments in there.
Nothing finished at this time, right?
Not finished at all. There's still-
The classroom, teaching.
What, I can't think, what's the man in charge of that?
Paul Fritsch.
Paul, yeah. I think he's overseas, he's in Portugal or someplace now.
He's in Portugal right now, yeah. I've talked to him several times this week.
Next time, we got those two houses, Ryan Cardwell's building out down Belma Street.
Down the street, is that?
Behind the nursing home.
Right there by Thomas, two blocks. They got two of them, he got one, he got their roof framed up on it today.
Yeah, saw that today.
He's got the footings in for the other one, so I'd say certainly he just can drive in there and start framing the next one.
Good.
He says he's got plans, he may do, he may do one more on that side, then he's gonna jump across the street and do two more on the other side.
Is that the one he's asking us to pay same?
Yes.
Yeah.
He got, he got eleven more lots, I don't have to go after thirteen total.
Right. There you go.
In the last page, just our normal, day-to-day stuff that we've gone there.
Very good.
Chuck, how is the project going on, stop signs?
We've been working on that, we, actually, that's what we did today, before I put up signs, yeah, we-
What are those new stop signs, Ryan?
About forty dollars a piece.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, they were in the bills tonight.
Yeah, that's what I saw, I was wondering how many we got, yeah.
Okay.
The bad thing about it is when we put up the new signs, I think they got a, they got a rapid run, you know, they keep changing their requirements on signs and posts and all that, we can't use the round posts anymore, you got to put in the base with the breakaway posts, so, so when we change out a sign, not only do you have to change out the sign itself, you gotta put a base and a post in, and the posts are about thirty-four dollars a piece, the base, the base is twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five dollars a piece, so you got all of that cost just to put a stop sign up.
Yeah.
What can you, are there anything we can redo, those old ones, or have any?
Here's kind of a novel question, actually, I wonder if it wouldn't be smart for us to take those old ones, they're junk to us, we can't use them, we ought to throw them in the FFA sale, because there's a niche of collectors out there who like those old things, we probably get twenty bucks a piece for them. Yeah, 'cause they're no use to you, are they, Chuck? I mean, it's not like you can ever use them again.
Teenagers steal road signs, yeah.
Well, I mean, you know, you see those in antique stores, they got a hundred bucks on, so, you know.
Good idea, yeah, we could do that.
Yeah, I mean, 'cause there's nothing else to, you know-
Everything's got retro collecting.
Yeah.
And we're, we're a couple years behind on being a client with that.
Yeah.
And not only that, is the, is the, the street signs for the, for the names of the streets, those all have to be retro collecting now, and they gotta be changed out, they can't, like ours are all uppercase letters, they've gotta be upper lowercase now, and those, that's all supposed to be done by end of this year.
Yes, because that just makes so much-
Well, you know, like I said, you know, that, that, there's a, there's a vintage niche out there that collects, all that, all that signage that you have, we could, you know, probably recoup a few bucks.
You know, might have, but they need to buy new signs.
You bet, you bet.
One thing we did do today was, we put up a sign at the Melinda and Thorpe Fair, and they had two, originally, there was two sign posts there, one with a stop sign on it, and the other one with the, the street names, so I ordered a base to put on the top of the stop sign, so we put all that on one sign post, so that'll, that'll cut down on the cost of the post a little bit, and do that all like, all like you're there.
Any other questions for Mr. Smith?
Question, the candidate self-taught.
Yes, yes.
Okay, we've got that one in. Thank you for your report, Mr. Smith. Oh, I thought you were pissed at me. The next is Mr. Sam Burke, City Administrator's report, please come forward and-
Good job. I paid this last week, I called him and talked to him, and he had some problems, he wanted my word that I would fix the problems, and he gets his budsmen out there and did what he asked him, let me draw the check. You have my report I sent to you on email, so if you have questions, I'll be glad to answer them if I can. I did spend about an hour out at the sewer plant today with the UV installation going on, one of, one pit is complete, the middle pit, the floor is complete, and yet now they poured the rest of it today, and the rock is all in place for the UV system and power was being run to, to that pit today, so they've made some really good progress once the weather kind of started up. Of course, we got more rain and snow and stuff coming this weekend, so next week we'll just have to wait and see how they, how they do.
So, about how long do you think it'll take to finish that?
Well, we've got a finish date of twelve February, we're not gonna make that, but we have a second date of the fifteenth of March, and they will be gone by then, so it's gonna take a little longer than that twelfth of February date, but anyway. Any, any questions, I mean, I'll be glad to answer them.
I just have one, Sam, if I might, the, the contractors that are doing that job, do they have a performance bond on completion date?
We'll have to look at the contract, Larry, I, we've got it in there in Vesey's office, you know, to answer that.
Right.
I mean, that's been a while, we, we've been, that's been through here.
There again, if these contractors, if we go through and sublet these contracts, should have performance bonds, so if they don't complete in a specified time period, they've got a penalty to pay, that's why they try to perform on time.
Well, our attorney looked over all that stuff, I know.
That would have been before my time, but I assume, but I assume that they have that, I'm, there's some, something in the contracts, the hard thing on that UV project has been so extended that I don't know what the-
It has.
Yeah, yeah, two hundred and sixty-five day delay from the DNR, I mean, it's just really been ugly. Anything else?
Your EEZ program, have we made any progress on that?
Yes, Charlie Ivey's been working with me on that, and we, we've made progress, and you've got names to be appointed for the board, does he, yes?
Do we? Oh, you have Monday?
I brought you Monday, no, this past Monday.
This?
Brought the letter in, too.
Okay, I guess I'm in the dark on that one, I'll have to look through my, my notes and see, that was at our meeting, Monday?
No, no.
No.
No, this, essentially, what it sits out is the new board members, the date of expiration, because the only one that's filled the board that then expired was Joey Cucci, she's, and I talked to each one of them, and she's continuing anyway, but I did put her date down there, the twelve, twelve thirty-one, twenty eighteen, and all the others are on there, Rustini represents the school district, and Dan Smith represents the other taxing representative district, being so much the county fire protection district, and so those are the two outlawing taxation districts that are required to be used, the other five members are listed on there as well.
We made some progress this week.
Well, in order for me to do that, do you recall what the names of the other people that are on there? I have Dan Smith and Joanne-
Dave, Dave. Dave Smith, Dave Smith.
Dave.
Dave Smith. Dave Smith, Rustini, Joey Cucci, Kirk Bennett, Dan Lemmer.
Jerry Clark.
Jerry Clark, and then Stan's gonna come to the first meeting, where we sit that up, and give a brief everybody a-
Okay, did everyone hear all those, because I didn't get them all written down, I got four of them.
We didn't get them to you.
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't.
So, it's, but it's, it's in there to appoint those guys, and then recommend the date for expiration of each of them.
Okay, but I have that, or it's?
It's in, it's in, I just dropped a file, and I put in a letter-
Ah, that's why I thought I'd have a little memory lapse here, okay.
Envelope on his desk.
There's envelopes on your desk.
All right, I can, I can retrieve that, and we can do that in my, my time here. Any, any questions for the city administrator?
Okay, thank you.
Think none, I guess it comes to the mayor's part. I told you at the last meeting that I would do some legwork on the old building on Anderson Street, I don't know the exact address there on that street, but let me tell you what I got done, I went down to, well, first of all, I called the county recorder, the assessor first, and then, then I called the recorder, and then the reason I called the recorder, I wanted to see if there had been any deed of trust filed on that property, I did find out, however, that there have been no taxes paid on that property in the last two years. There, there was a fellow that did some work on that building for a while, and then there was a torrential flood, according to this fellow, I was able to get in touch with him and talk with him about that, he was in a deal with a fellow in Springfield, and fellow kind of welched on the deal, went back on his part of the deal, and so he did quit claim that property back to the entity which has it now. The entity which has it now is JRC Investment, they mailed their tax statements down to 1112 South Weller in Springfield, and I've been down to that place and got no response, left my number there, have no response, but Mr. Hoots, that actually did the work, said that he would get in touch with these people and get back in touch with me, so, so we may be able to come to some resolution, at least on that Anderson Street house. And the next one that, that we need to work on, Jim, is that Hart, that Davis Street property down there that we need to find the owners of, but, well, we, we have their names, but I don't know exactly where they, where they're at, I know they're at Hartville.
Yeah, yeah.
But other than that, I guess it would necessitate a trip down there, see if we can come to some resolution on that, because, you know, these derelict properties, and that was on my list, things to do, but Mr. Kelly has since, you know, bought that old property in behind the apartments there on Steel Street, he's cleaned up that lot in behind, he also bought the two trailers, and has cleaned up all that, he also bought all this property in behind, and he is interested in seeing that road serviceable. Anyway, that was his report to me, Dan, and I said, well, we, we thought that you were, weren't either way, but the day I got there, they were having some, some difficulty, and but anyway, he, he did decide that he was gonna serve on our board, and, and he is planning something down there, and he said, I, I'm gonna need service to that property, and I assured him that we would be expeditious about providing him service to that. So, so that's what I have to tell you on that property on Anderson Street, I'm still working on that to find out if there is any hope for getting that, maybe a consortium with a couple of contractors in town buying that thing, tearing the property down, building a couple of nice units there. Mr. Hoots even showed some renewed interest when I told him we were running water and sewer out to the old theater property, and his comment was just this, he said, what do you think that'll do to the value of that property? I told him I thought it would go, definitely go up, because one thing that you do, if you spend money on property, it's gonna affect all the adjacent properties in a positive way, so I'm looking forward to it, I think the city's moving in the right direction, and this will be a major thing for us, I think you're opening the door to tremendous opportunity on what we've done here tonight. Sometimes progress is a little bit difficult, and so, moving through those things, though, I think it's gonna be very positive for the people of the town. All right, that's about all that I think that I had, that I've been working on, of course, you know what else I've been working on here, and it just concerned me when I saw that, and so, so I did the most logical thing for me to do, I, I attacked that contract, and Mr. Link did his job, I got to hand it to Mr. Link, because I didn't know how much of that they would agree to, because we made some twenty different-
I think it was twenty-four.
-changes in their agreement, and most of them were said were the city of Seymour pays, now Mr. Hoots and Associates pay, and I just felt like it was the right thing to do in those areas. So, nothing else, any questions for the mayor? Saying none, we'll move on to our city attorney's report, Mr. Link.
I don't have a whole lot, Larry, I would just tell everybody, we had a big court today, this afternoon, if anybody hears, you know, they took longer than normal, last month's court was canceled due to weather, and so we had a double month, basically, today, so we had a full house in here, so if you hear any complaints, and man, I was at court all afternoon, it's, that's the deal, is we just had two months of tickets, but I think we got everybody through as quickly as we could, and, and still were done, obviously, before the board meeting tonight, but there could be somebody that thinks that, you know, there's way too many people at court or something, so just kind of a heads up, but we got them all processed and got everybody in and out as quick as we could.
Good, good, how many, how many cases did you, did you see today?
If I would guess, I would say fifty to sixty.
Wow, wow, lot.
It was, it was a, if they were all here at the same time, they'd kind of stagger in, if they would have been far and away standing room only today.
Absolutely. Lot of activity going on, some of it.
Right.
Well, it's, it's positive, though, it's correcting some problems, isn't it? So, that's positive.
And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that, Mr. Link, any questions for Mr. Link? Anybody in the audience got a question for Mr. Link? Saying none? All right, I'm gonna move on to the Alderman report, and I'm gonna go down to the forehand and ask Mr. Weimer, Mr. Weimer, she recognizes-
I don't think.
None? That was quick. Very good, Ms. Chris, Councilman Chris.
Frank Appel calling, wanting to know if the city had anything to support the infrastructure, if the city puts things in there.
Dan's got a good suggestion.
You know, it's-
Yeah, I think this year it's March thirty-first or something like that, really late March, early April, and two, it's Easter weekend, if I remember right.
Very good, so I guess if we've got things down city that, yeah, I think we do an annual report that's due, when is it, March? Uh, March, March the first?
I think it's like a surplus property report that you wanna.
Right, no, I'm talking about a city inventory.
Yeah.
That we, we do, and it's, we turn it into the council by the, what, what day is that, Sam, do you recall? We did one last year.
I don't remember.
It's, it's, it's around this time of year.
In March, it's in March sometime. But anyway, that, uh, that'll let us discover maybe if we've got any surplus things down there that we can do for that.
And I've had several in my office complaining about the police department sitting behind and across from the hotspot in that empty lot.
Right.
They said they backed up in there with up the lights, or they seemed sitting there a lot.
They sat there quite a bit, uh, but.
I've had several complaints up there.
I would approach, it's in there a lot here.
What's the, what's the complaint, or are the people just mad?
Well, they backed up in there.
Getting tickets.
Well.
Turn the lights on.
They, they do, they sit up there some. You know what, we could encourage them to, uh, utilize that as well as, uh, I mean, and they have been.
I think they complain more about them backed up in there with their lights off more.
They don't want to be seen.
Well, yeah, I mean, should they put a sign up and say, hey, we're here.
We've got a, uh, sting down here, and everybody slow down.
And I was wondering if we could get some kind of fluorescent sign or some kind of sign, put in the police station when they're there, you know, pull it on, when they leave, pull it off. How would you know that the police was ever?
We don't have Sergeant Dinwiddie here tonight, but we do have Sam, Sam, what's your thought on that?
Yeah, Sam.
On a fluorescent sign for the police department?
Neon sign or, yeah. Just like when they're there to pull it on.
I guess we could do that, huh?
I mean, you never know when they're there.
Okay.
Like it just says open?
Yeah, open.
Just like we have out here in front of.
Convenience store.
City hall.
I don't think they're very expensive, but.
Yeah, they're, they're not too terribly expensive. Anything else?
Yeah, this is, you know, someone come in and ask me if you got a building permit for your building.
Yeah, you want to see it?
No, I don't want to see it, but I can.
Yeah, I got building permit.
And then.
There's your, uh, building inspector, and he's shaking his head yes, so we're, we're covered.
And then there's a lady, maybe on the sidewalk, said when they built that building, they didn't pick up the trash and she had to pick up the trash.
Uh, I've put about a half a load of it in my truck. It was, it's been real windy and there's, and there's been trash that's blown, but if you go down there now, it's all cleaned up.
Well, I haven't seen it.
Yep. Yep.
And I was gonna ask Chuck this one, did you have any more bids on the trees in, in the square?
Just got the one bid.
And that's all you?
We had, uh, we had a, a small company out in Marshfield, I met with them on the square, and they, they said they were gonna turn a bid in, and never did.
Speak, speaking of that, since we did, you, we ran the case, we did know this was.
Yes, we did.
We, do we need to vote and approve that, or was it a budgeted thing? Did we decide what we needed to do on that?
It's not.
That was.
Can it be on the next agenda?
Uh-huh.
Next agenda, okay, we'll, we'll put the bid open on the next agenda.
Yeah, that, yeah, we need to get going with that, don't we, Sam?
Yeah.
That's probably my fault, missing it on the agenda.
Yeah.
But possibly, I don't know, you think it would be advisable to put that in some other periodicals?
No, I think you're gonna get the bid you got, and that's the end of it, I, I, you know, we thought, we know we're legal, and this, and this is an arborist, correct? Yeah. You said you wanted, you know, I'd say let's do it.
Right.
Yeah, very, very knowledgeable. He used to work with State Oil, but no company. Will Green is one of the recommending, uh, I've had several conversations with, but, oh, yeah, another company that came out of Marshfield. They originally came from Florida, they haven't been here in a little long time, and, uh, even though I turned to them, I wouldn't hire them.
Right. Well, it would be good, I mean, isn't this the time when they want to be doing the work before things are bringing up?
Yeah, yeah, uh, the, the guy from printers I talked to, he said with the oats, you'll probably have to come back in August and, and do the oak trees. If, if, if you're cutting way back, you got major limbs that'll gotta come off, he said, uh, they got to do it probably in August. If you don't, you can't get us in quick enough now for that kind of trimming, you can come out now and he can start the process, then, and finish it up in August, which we will get that in pulled out the best.
Good.
Well, I should be answering questions in two, in two phases.
What, uh, what was the extent of that bid, Chuck?
Ten thousand?
Ten, ten thousand.
Ten, ten thousand, no.
Ten thousand, not sixteen, ten thousand.
But we're, we're, we, we can do part of the work ourselves, the hauling and that kind of stuff.
We can save two to three thousand dollars.
Yeah, we can, so, you know, we intend to do that.
Yeah, if we bring Chipper truck up, let him drop it, if you drag it off the chipper, we could save different money.
Yep.
Good, you know how much?
About three grand, I think.
Oh, good, good.
Two to three thousand dollars, they charge us a hundred fifty-five dollars an hour.
Yeah.
So that, that'll add up.
Pretty extensive.
Guys just drag limbs off and, and chip it off.
Very good, um, Nadine, did you, uh, Ms. Chris? Okay, move on down to Mr. Ashley then.
Uh, just got a couple of things. When was the last time that we tried to get bids, uh, for trimming under the power line? We talked about it and there at one point, there at one point we had the city divided up into four, four parts. Uh, and I really don't know what else happened on that, but could we get bids?
Nobody did ever bid and wanted bid, took it back.
Yeah, I, I remember that. I, I remember that. Do we, some, some of that money's budgeted, isn't it?
Uh, boy, it's been a while, uh, I'm gonna say yes, but I don't know for sure. Leslie, can you correct me? No?
I don't think specific line item for tree trimming, no, but some capital improvements.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
But I don't know, uh, they're in pretty bad shape, aren't they?
Yeah.
In places.
Yeah, in places they are.
In places, I don't know, I don't know what everybody else thinks, but I would think we could try to get bids again to try to get something done on it. Because it costs us our way, the way Grady had talked about it here with, with, there's, there's enough line loss that, or is that, do we lose enough in line loss from limbs hitting the line?
I think you lose some of it.
Yeah.
I don't know, so what we don't like on that bid we're looking at, that is not, you know, that is an average.
Yeah.
Of the city, you know, they don't necessarily.
Don't know, I'm not an electrician.
But I mean, you know, that street life is line loss, uh.
Yeah, sure.
So.
Yeah.
Anything we're not getting into, that's line loss.
Okay, all right. Anyway, it looks to me like we need to try to get some trimming done if we can.
All right, I made a note of it, so.
Uh, one more thing, how many, and this, I don't, this might not save any money at all, how mu, how many copiers did the city lease?
Three.
We leased, we lose, we leased three?
Yeah, four.
We leased four, and this eighty-two dollars and thirty-four cents, is that for one, or is that for all of them? That's just for one? Would it be cheaper for us to just buy a bunch of small copiers and throw them away when we're done with them and get another one? Would it save us any money?
The, the catch is, uh, there's yin and yang to it, I mean, a really good copier, the kind that, your main one that you have here, Leslie, that's a twenty thousand dollar machine.
Right.
And, uh.
And that eight.
That's a pretty good lease price.
Hell by toner.
Yeah, and you don't have to buy.
Okay, all right, I'm asking, you got, you got.
I mean, we think we've got the best deal, Jim, but I don't mind looking into that, but.
It's just, I, I, I'm just, you know, I'm asking.
You know how expensive toner is, I mean, it's terrible.
Yep, yep.
And maintenance, anytime you just call them and they're here, like sometimes same day.
Yeah, I've got the, I used to buy machines outright, but anymore, I lease them now.
Yeah, okay.
It's just a better, yeah.
And then just, uh, several people commenting on streets, but we can't do anything about it till spring.
Not till the weather gets better.
That simple, I'm done.
In the way of, uh, electrical maintenance and supplies, which is, I think that's what this would fall under, tree trimming and things like that. Uh, we have budgeted seventy-five thousand dollars for that, maintenance supplies, under the electrical expenses.
And make sure it was spent.
I'm sorry. I mean, it could.
We had proposed seventy-five thousand.
Just for maintenance supplies, um, like there's a infrastructure line on the next page.
There is, uh.
Yeah, that was for pole replacement.
Actually, what we spent, uh, in calendar year two thousand sixteen seventeen was eighty-five thousand three hundred fifty-one dollars and seventy-eight cents.
That included the bucket truck too, though, didn't it?
I don't know, that's maintenance and supplies, it shouldn't, that'd be a capital.
Yeah, it's the bucket trucks right here.
Yeah.
There's the bucket truck.
The capital improvement, uh, capital expense was, uh, fifty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars.
Yeah.
So that's a separate line item.
But here's your other, we've got this much, hundred twenty-two thousand, like, for pole replacement, and I would say tree trimming can fall under that.
Well.
That's in the budget right there.
Okay, so is that, that answer?
Or would that be, would one of them be maintenance and another one capital improvement, would both be back capital improvement?
Well, I'd say we're, we're, either way.
It's, uh, replacing poles is maintenance.
Right. So.
This goes online, I think.
That's what we're doing, uh, so, I mean, that's my opinion, Mitch might have a different opinion.
It depends on, like, on that contractor said, that it's not maintenance, they're putting a brand new boat, doing all this new equipment. And that's what brings it from paying, you know, like a co-op thing in contract. The city being a gun, you gotta take some of what, when you go, if it's not maintenance on poles, uh, replacement forms of what they contract and charge.
But we come down, we, we've got some money to, to, to pay for some tree trimming.
Okay.
I mean, isn't that right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You could, yeah, you could create a new line item and pick some out and.
One of the problems we have, Jim, with the tree trimming is, we can get all kinds of folks to say they can do it, but they're not insured and bonded.
Oh, yeah, they need to be insured and have a performance bond and everything goes with it.
So when you do end up with somebody that's got, you know, all the stuff, it's expensive.
Yeah.
But anyway, I'll certainly get some more quotes.
And then the first thing they add is how much, or, you know, when you're looking at spend.
Yeah.
So, I mean, they.
Can't the guys that are going to the square just do the, the trees too?
Hard to get, oh, for a small job, isn't it?
Guy on the square is an arborist, arborist.
Mm.
Arborist, yeah. I can ask you, no, that's a good idea.
Anyway, I'm done.
Okay, uh, anything else? Come before the board here to, uh, promote the good of Seymour. Uh, I need a motion to move into executive session, to move, do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, can I have a roll call, please?
Jim Ashley?
Yes.
Meeting Chris, Dave Leimer.
Motion carries, so with that, the general session is adjourned, and we'll move into executive session.